December the 7th Pearl Harbor Day to order. And with that, as usual, we will start the meeting with our Chaplain Prayer and pledges. And I think we have Marcella and Gary Jenkins here to lead us in both.
Good morning, members.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Let's pray. Dear God, in the scriptures you have said that the citizens are to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, the Honorable Brenda Gunter, the members of the San Angelo City Council, and the people we serve. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and interest of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before our council today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around our beloved city of San Angelo. I pray, Lord, that you eradicate COVID from San Angelo and around the entire world. Please kill those that have contracted the virus. Bring peace to those that have lost loved ones during this season. Let's be obedient to the guidelines that have been set by CDC, social distancing, wearing a face mask, and washing our hands. It is in your most blessed name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Amen. Will you repeat after me the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our first proclamation today will be the proclamation of December the 7th, 2021 as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. And I know we have several people in the audience today, so if you'll please come forward. On Sunday, December the 7th, 1941, the Imperial Japanese Navy launched a surprise attack on Pearl Harbor in an attempt to break the American will and destroy our Pacific Fleet. The attack left over 3,500 Americans killed or wounded and marked the United States' entrance into World War II. President Franklin D. Roosevelt declared December 7th, 1941, a date which will live in infamy. In his official speech on December 8th, 1941, he included, "No matter how long it may take us to overcome this premeditated invasion, the American people in their righteous might will win through to absolute victory. And with confidence in our armed services, with the unbounding determination of our people, we will gain the inevitable triumph." So help us, God. Our service members valiantly answer the call by defending their positions, fighting back against our attackers, and caring for our wounded. The sacrifices made by the members of our armed forces and civilians to protect America and its people will never be forgotten. On August 23rd, 1994, Congress by Public Law 103-308 designated December the 7th of each year as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, authorizing and requesting the president to issue annually a proclamation calling on the people of the United States to observe the day with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and to urge all federal agencies and interested organizations, groups, and individuals to fly the flag at half-staff each December the 7th in honor of the individuals who died as a result of their service at Pearl Harbor. Commemoration of the attack on Pearl Harbor will instill in all people of the United States a greater understanding and appreciation of the selfless sacrifice of the individuals who served in the armed forces of the United States during World War II. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, do hereby proclaim December the 7th, 2021 as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. In San Angelo, Texas, further be it known that the citizens of San Angelo remember with eternal respect those who were injured or killed on December the 7th, 1941 at Pearl Harbor, including Seaman First Class Walton A. Irwin, a citizen of San Angelo, whose mortal remains are forever entombed in the USS Arizona. Who would like to speak?
Good morning, San Angelo. As a veteran myself, as we all are, we thank the City of San Angelo for giving us a chance to be here to accept this proclamation from our good mayor, not only for those who died on December the 7th, 1941, but all of those who have died since December the 7th, 1941.
San Angelo has always been a military town, and the people that have served in the military in San Angelo have learned to appreciate it immediately, and that's why a lot of people come back to San Angelo. And our retired community here is roughly 17,000 people. So we, not just for this day, but for every day, we appreciate the people of San Angelo.
Reads Day. And I know we have many people in the audience for this. Please come forward. Fantastic. Good morning, good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Bill. Come on around. We can come around this way as well, okay?
Glad we have so many people. It's a good problem.
This is a good problem. San Angelo ISD is committed to building the literacy skills of the children of San Angelo and to instill a passion for reading in every student. As part of this commitment, SAISD is partnering with the City of San Angelo, local businesses, and other community groups for a community-wide literacy initiative, San Angelo Reads, to increase awareness of the importance of literacy. SAISD administrators, principals, and educators are focusing on this initiative in schools together with comprehensive literacy programs to inspire a love for reading. SAISD invites the San Angelo community to join in and get to reading. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, and together with San Angelo Independent School District administrators, principals, educators, staff, and students, do hereby recognize December the 9th, 2021 as the Second Annual San Angelo Reads Day, and urge all citizens in San Angelo, Texas, to acknowledge the occasion of this day in celebration of the importance of literacy and of instilling a passion for reading in our youth. Who's going to come forward? Whitney, come on.
I'll start. Well, thank you, Mayor Gunter, and thank you, City Council members. And before we talk about San Angelo Reads Day, I do want to say on behalf of San Angelo ISD that we humbly and respectfully honor our Pearl Harbor men and women and our servicemen and women in the community. You mean so much to this community, and we wouldn't be here and we wouldn't be celebrating this day without those men and women. So thank you first about that. And then to talk about San Angelo Reads Day, we are so excited and truly appreciative of Mayor Gunter, our City Council members, and all of our community partners and leaders, who I will talk about here in a minute. But last December 9th, we launched San Angelo Reads, the Community-Wide Literacy Initiative, and it's all about inspiring a love of reading. We know, looking at statistics, how vitally important it is to really foster a love of reading and to get children on grade-level reading by third grade. They're four times more likely to drop out of school if they are not on grade-level reading by that, by third grade. So this is just all about championing reading and fostering that love of reading. We do a lot in our schools that are so impactful to really teach our students to read and really get them to love it and have choice reading, but we want to partner with our community because it's important for them to begin before school, before they're entering our school system, and it's important that it goes beyond the school day because that's how they build those vocabulary, they build that passion for reading. So we invite our community to join with us. On San Angelo Reads Day this Thursday, it can be as simple as reading a book to a loved one or joining in a literacy program. We have a lot of great programs in the community, or attending one of the events at great places like the Tom Green County Libraries. So I do want to thank our community partners that we have here today that are really, truly championing literacy with us and recognize the importance of how this impacts our youth in San Angelo, but also our overall community and how vital it is to the success of the community. So today we have with us, we have Shannon Medical Center, Dr. Sandy Seifert; we have Howard College Dean Pam Callen; we have our wonderful ladies from the Tom Green County Libraries, we have Sally Myers and Amy Dennis; we have from our good fellow Air Force Base Vice Commander Colonel James Finlayson, thank you, sir, and extra thanks on this important day; and of course, good fellow Air Force Base School Liaison that we work so closely with, Teresa Goodwin; and we have several of our San Angelo ISD School Board members that we can't thank enough all the time, but we appreciate them joining this as well. We've got with us here today President Max Parker, Bill Dindel, Amy Mizell Flint, and Lanny Lehman; and of course, Dr. Deathloff, our Superintendent, and Dr. Jana Ritter, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and really helped get us the fire of starting this initiative last year. And of course, our wonderful friends at Whataburger, through their Feeding Success Program, we have Area Manager David Boney here, and Ms. Amanda Howell, she's a wonderful partner too. They are helping us to give all of our third graders district-wide a book. As part of San Angelo Reads, we get books into children's hands. We realize that not every child has their own collection of books at home, and how important it is to get books in kids' hands to really support this literacy initiative. So we cannot do this without the support of our community. So we thank these leaders that are here with us today, and also ones that weren't able to make it, you know, Angelo State University, HEB, Fast Signs of San Angelo, all of those groups. And we have even Karen Kirkendall here with August Fluger's office, and Drew Darby has also supported us in the past. So we invite all of y'all to join us this Thursday. And again, it can be as simple as reading a book to a loved one and modeling that reading. So thank you so much, and we can't wait to celebrate on Thursday. Follow our Facebook page, you'll see some of the fun things that we'll be doing. At 2:00 PM, we'll be doing a live read aloud of the book that our friends at Whataburger are providing to our third graders. So again, we just want to celebrate and inspire a love of reading. So thank you.
But if you would choose to take that on, if anybody likes to do that. All right, let's come forward, just like you are, tighten up, and let's have a picture.
Is all that other was?
I gotta get home. I got my daughter.
Our next proclamation will be the proclamation of December the 17th, 2021 as San Angelo NAACP Day. So I know we also have people in the audience for this, so please come forward. The San Angelo National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, was formed in 1946 by community leader, Mr. L.A. Rayburn, and a few dedicated black men and women. Throughout the years, the NAACP has helped deliver tremendous leadership from the black community, serving as an integral voice for concerns about equality and justice. Leaders from this organization were involved in the Planning Committee to Integrate Public Schools in San Angelo in 1954, the first black person to serve as a City Council Representative, and the first black woman to serve as a council member, the first black person to be elected to a county position as a county constable, and several black men and women serving in volunteer positions on various boards and commissions. The San Angelo NAACP has repeatedly guided minority residents to register to vote and vote in all elections, serve as election workers, and engage in Get Out the Vote programs and activities. In 2017, the local chapter hosted the NAACP Regional Conference, and in 2019, served as the host chapter of the first-ever NAACP State Conference in San Angelo, Texas. The local chapter has continued to fight for voting rights, economic equality, and educational opportunities, and has worked to advance the social, political, and economic conditions of ethnic people of color. Our city has benefited from the NAACP's unwavering dedication to the objective of securing equality of opportunity for all. As this organization celebrates 75 years of service to the San Angelo community, we salute the officers and members who have worked to improve the lives of all residents of San Angelo. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, hereby proclaim December 17th, 2021 as San Angelo NAACP Day, to recognize and honor this organization for 75 years of service to the San Angelo community, and ask that all of our citizens continue to work for the principles they have dedicated themselves to uphold.
Mayor and council, we thank you for the recognition of our local NAACP unit. I am not a native San Angelen, but I came here as a young airman in 1958, and I had the pleasure, extreme pleasure, of personally knowing L.A. Rayburn. As the years have transpired, I consider it now a pleasure to have known him. But when I first came here, when I would see him in town, and he had the philosophy that every black person should be a member of the NAACP, and he had a system where he would know when the young black airmen were coming to a town, and he'd wait on us. He'd tell us what we needed to do, that he considered we needed to do to improve our station as American citizens. So we would kind of try to hide from him, you might say, even though we understood that what he was saying was true. When I think about how he was, I would say that he would consider this to be a great, great recognition of the efforts of the local unit. But he would say, "Job well done so far, but you must continue on." I've been asked several times, "Do I think the NAACP is still needed?" And my reaction to that is, look around, see what's happening, see the young black men and women that are being shot by the police department, look at what is going on on the political scene, think about what is happening now. We've got now redistricting going on as a result of the latest census. Work must be done, and work continues to be done, but I do say, thank you very much for San Angelo's recognition of our accomplishments so far. Thank you.
Hey, that was Garland Fries, our immediate past president. I'm Shirley Spears, the current president. And I wanted to make sure that Mr. Fries had an opportunity to speak on this very special day. And joining me, we have one of our life members, Ms. Sally Myers, and our Vice President of our chapter, Ms. Michelle Reed. It is so important for us to have an opportunity to receive this recognition and honor the legacy of our founder, as Mr. Fries said, Mr. L.A. Rayburn. And when I lived here back in the 80s, I was fortunate enough to attend church with him. And all I can say is that I just viewed him as a no-nonsense type man, and he just didn't take no for an answer, as Mr. Fries has alluded to, and he wanted us all to be our best. We are so honored to have served this community for 75 years, and we are holding a great celebration next Friday to actually mark this time in history. So we appreciate the City Council and the mayor. We especially appreciate Councilwoman Gonzalez for helping us to get this done and get this written. And so to the City of San Angelo, we ask that you really embrace the last paragraph of this proclamation where it says, "We ask that all our citizens continue to work for the principles that we have dedicated ourselves to uphold in the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People." Thank you so much.
We will now move into the public comment portion of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. We announced earlier that during this public comment time period, people could come forward and talk about redistricting. And so are there any individuals in the audience who would like to come forward and talk about the redistricting? It is on the agenda later on, but we announced in the paper that public comment would be heard on this item, so we're going to start with it now, and it will also be a part of the regular agenda.
Alden Allen, and what I would like to tell you is that I think there's been some confusion about the maps, and I've dressed this Thursday night. The maps, when you try to blow them up on the website, become very, very blurred. And so I have discussed boundary lines that have changed with people that I know that have thought one thing was happening when another was, and I have had to say, "Well, you need two things. You need your computer and you need your cellphone." And if you go on your cellphone to the HEBB website and hit that, that has very clear streets that you can look at, and so that would alleviate it any time in the future. If something involves a map, please make it legible. Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you. Any additional comment at this point? All right, with none, is there a public comment concerning any other issues today? I see someone coming forward.
Good morning, Council. My name is Sylvia Martinez. I live at 818 San Jacinto Street, and Harry is my City Council. I come today because a while, years back, they put me, because I have extreme tremors that they can pick up the trash by my house. For the past year, I've been having a lot of trouble because of the fact that it's been missed. I have been calling and calling for them to pick it up. I ask this because I wonder then how many people in my district has been missing, been missing the trash, the people. When I get out there and talk to them, they say we don't have a designated driver. And I say to myself, "Well, why don't we have a designated driver on our side?" And Harry says that they're going to change it. I hope it goes to the better because my friend in Riverside, she lives on Riverside Street, she gets her trash picked up from the side of her house, the man gets off and puts it back where it belongs. Us over there, like y'all say in the barrio, they do not want. I even painted a yellow pole so they could stop, and it says "Stop," and they cannot pick up my trash. I wonder why. We're all paying the same amount of this. And I hope that when y'all did this separating, you know, the lines for the voting, I hope it was to where it can help everybody, because sometimes we don't get no help on that side. Y'all have a best day, and I hope that y'all keep doing the good work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there additional public comment? Shane, if you would please come forward, I would like to have an opportunity for us to... Well, I have someone else came in forward, and then Shane, you'll be after him. And Shane, just so you know, we're going to talk about the frontier, people laying fiber, and tremendous number of people very upset about what's happening, just to give you a heads up. Thank you, sir.
I'm Jack Miller, District 2. I wanted to bring up the department policy.
He didn't say much. Tracy Fincher, the supervisor, he's the one that talked the whole time. And at the very end of it, the only thing Frank Carter said was, "I wanted to identify that officer," and he said, "Oh, that's Jacob Anderson." And Tracy Fincher and Internal Affairs Detective, they agreed, and they agreed it was Jacob Anderson, but they lied to me. And I was very specific on who I was asking about. There was only one officer that was punching and kneeing someone in the face, but he lied to me. I made the complaint on Jacob Anderson, and it was unfounded because he didn't do anything wrong. But they watched the video of kneeing and punching in the face, so...
All right, your three minutes, is that... Your three minutes is up.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you very much. All right, Shane, so what I have been receiving tremendous amount of comment on is that the Housley Communications folks, which have been hired to lay fiber for Frontier, and the individuals doing it have seemingly no concern about destroying someone's landscaping and/or the drip underneath the landscaping, and have been told that without a doubt that their landscaping would be put back into its appropriate, how it was beforehand. But I think about how many miles of fiber's been laid, 49 miles or something like that. It seems to me that's going to be a pretty major project to redo everyone's landscape, and certainly there's a lot of concern out there, and a lot of complaints.
Yes, ma'am, there is. And of course, when any of that is done within the public right-of-way, of course, any citizen that places anything into a public right-of-way is taking their own risk to have it damaged or even, in some cases, not even put back into place, depending on what it is. Now, I have been told at Frontier and as well as their subcontractor, Housley, and of course, Housley has several subcontractors as well that's working for them throughout this project are going to be working to replace as best as they can to bring it back to where it was in its original state. And again, that will take time, as this is a very large project again. And Frontier is not going to be the only contractor that's going to be in town doing it, or provider going to be doing this. There are two or three other providers that have also approached the city for permits to place fiber optic cable within the public right-of-ways. And so, but, and again, as we look at this, most, the majority of the public right-of-ways, and of course, we do get a lot of people, you know, worried about what's in their front yard, you know, "People are digging in my front yard." In most cases, not every case, and so we have to be very careful with this, or the contractors have to be very careful with this. But in most instances, there's five to 10 feet from behind, back of curb into the front yard that is generally public right-of-way, that has been dedicated when the land was actually platted in its original plat. So, and we also, they are also going down other city utility easements, whether that's a standard utility easement or a drainage easement, they are going down some of those as well, too, so you will see them in other locations besides just the streets as well. But again, we're keeping up with them as best we can. We do have a inspector that's going behind them to make sure that they are putting the city's assets back in place. Again, we don't have any way to enforce them placing back the private citizens' assets, but we are ensuring that the city's assets are being put back in place.
I think what, you know, if you had property at City Right-of-Way, and you spent the money and the time to landscape it, obviously knowing it was City Right-of-Way, but did we want them to leave it there ugly? Because it's City Right-of-Way. I mean, you know, when you're a residential area, I can't imagine that the expectation is leave five to 10 feet ugly...
Yes, ma'am.
And then create a landscape program.
Yes, ma'am, and maybe Teresa, with some of the right-of-way, new right-of-way legislation at the state that's taking some of that authority away from us, she may be able to speak to some of that better than I can on what they actually have to do versus what they do not have to do. But again, we as the city normally, you know, when we go into a project, even if we are having to take out landscape or trees or whatever it is, you know, we try to make sure that we, even to some degree sod or grass, we try to make sure that we put it back as best as we can, like we found it. But again, not all companies are like us, so...
You know, I have great respect for how we managed and handled some of the chip seal and those programs, because we really did a great job of communicating to the citizens about what was going to happen, put flyers, we did, and knocking on doors. I mean, we really did a great job of communicating. And I think one of the biggest problems now is that there's no flyer, no knocking on the door, no anything. All of a sudden, someone shows up with pink paint and starts putting spots in the yard, and, you know, yes, there's something on the city webpage, but I don't know of many citizens that every day go onto the city website and go, "Oh, there's a new message out there today. Oh, it's about Frontier. Oh, I need to..." I mean, I think we need, I think I have expectations that the companies that are going to come in and do this could do a much better job of putting something on a homeowner's doorknob that says, "Be aware, we're going to be in your front yard laying fiber over the next week or so." I just think there's a mess there, and I think going forward, we need to make sure that these companies have an obligation to communicate better to the citizens of what's going to happen in their yard, in their landscaping, even if it's City Right-of-Way, whatever. It's, I think, important.
Yes, ma'am. And also, we do have a number here for their Frontier's construction coordinator, and I'll go ahead and read it out in his name, so in case people are watching today, they can reach out to this person if they do have any issues or complaints. The Frontier construction coordinator is Steve Cortese. His email address is S-T-E-V-E dot C-O-R-T-E-S-E at F-T-R dot com, and his phone number is area code 325-249-5458. So if anybody has an issue with, again, with anything that's going on within their yard, or within any issues that they have with Frontier, with the fiber themselves, they can contact Steve, and he will be able to, again, work with them to fix their issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Teresa, do you have any comment?
No comment, other than what Shane indicated, that we have very little control of what they're doing in the right-of-way. I think that they are, we are communicating with them on a very frequent basis, and I do think they are trying to accommodate people as much as possible. I don't know if we've made any indication to them that some sort of hangers, when they're going into a neighborhood, might be helpful, but I think we could probably reach out to them with that idea. But in 2006, I think it was, the state of Texas took franchise authority away from the city when it comes to telecommunications companies, and so we are extremely limited in this circumstance.
I still think the question, the ask, should be made. We appreciate the fact that in 2006, there was a decision made, but I still think we have an obligation for communication to citizens about what's going to go, what's happening, why it's happening, and have some sort of doorknob thing that says, "Here's the number you call."
We will, we will reach out to Frontier and their local staff and visit with them to see if we can't help them be a little more proactive as we're moving into these future neighborhoods that they're going to be working in. Well, also, as these other companies move in and start work as well, we'll also work with them to make sure that they're trying to provide the same upfront.
I think it would help a lot. Thank you. Can we have that number again, please?
Yeah, I was going to say, do the email address, the name, and the number one more time, again, Shane.
Okay. It's Frontier, it's the Frontier construction coordinator. His name is Steve Cortese. It's S-T-E-V-E dot C-O-R-T-E-S-E at F-T-R dot com. The phone number is area code 325-249-5458. So if anybody has an issue with, again, with anything that's going on within their yard, or within any issues that they have with Frontier, with the fiber themselves, they can contact Steve, and he will be able to, again, work with them to fix their issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Teresa, do you have any comment?
No comment, other than what Shane indicated, that we have very little control of what they're doing in the right-of-way. I think that they are, we are communicating with them on a very frequent basis, and I do think they are trying to accommodate people as much as possible. I don't know if we've made any indication to them that some sort of hangers, when they're going into a neighborhood, might be helpful, but I think we could probably reach out to them with that idea. But in 2006, I think it was, the state of Texas took franchise authority away from the city when it comes to telecommunications companies, and so we are extremely limited in this circumstance.
I still think the question, the ask, should be made. We appreciate the fact that in 2006, there was a decision made, but I still think we have an obligation for communication to citizens about what's going to go, what's happening, why it's happening, and have some sort of doorknob thing that says, "Here's the number you call."
We will, we will reach out to Frontier and their local staff and visit with them to see if we can't help them be a little more proactive as we're moving into these future neighborhoods that they're going to be working in. Well, also, as these other companies move in and start work as well, we'll also work with them to make sure that they're trying to provide the same upfront.
I think it would help a lot. Thank you. Can we have that number again, please?
Yeah, I was going to say, do the email address, the name, and the number one more time, again, Shane.
Okay. It's Frontier, it's the Frontier construction coordinator. His name is Steve Cortese. It's S-T-E-V-E dot C-O-R-T-E-S-E at F-T-R dot com. The phone number is area code 325-249-5458.
We might ask Brian Groves to, on the front page of the city website, post something that's easily accessible in terms of getting this information. He's coming forward, so I think he's going to have some comment anyway, so...
Good morning. Actually, it is the front-center image right now. When we sent that out, every media organization ran it. We posted it on our social media. We posted that again last week, because we started getting more calls, because they were in new neighborhoods. So we're happy to share that more often. We can email all of this information to you guys as well. But yes, that is front and center on our website right now for people to look at.
I forget what the number is, but there's a number that says, "If you don't repeat the message X amount of times..."
Right.
"...no one gets it." So we just need to be very persistent in providing the information, knowing that it changes from neighborhood to neighborhood on a weekly basis, so only when it hits your neighborhood do you become concerned and look.
Yes, ma'am. And like I said, we kind of notice when they hit a new neighborhood, because our phones start ringing more in our office, asking what's going on, and so that's usually a clear indication that we need to push it out again, because they're obviously in a new area. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments concerning this issue from council?
No, ma'am.
Okay. With that, we will move into the consented... Oh, is there any further public comment? Sorry. With no further public comment, we will close the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. I'm going to start with Larry. Are there any items, Larry?
(inaudible).
Loving that one.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Lucy. No, ma'am. Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
With that, then, may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lucy. Any public comment concerning consent agenda items? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes six zero. We will move into the regular agenda portion of today's meeting. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are accepted from the time limit above and must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A, consider awarding AP-06-21 Terminal Ramp Reconstruction with Hensel Phelps Construction Company in the amount of $2,259,334.60, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Jeremy, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I'm Jeremy Valgarten, representing the airport. This project...
The airport busy over Thanksgiving weekend?
Very, yes, yes, very busy. It's good to see the terminal full again, and the ASU football charter, we were busting at the same, so it's been exciting.
Good.
This project, it was started since 2018, and the FAA is usually on a three-year funding cycle, so this has been a nice project that I've been able to see pretty much from the start. But the concrete ramp just outside of the terminal, where FedEx pulls in and where we enter what we call Gate One to the terminal, all the concrete's breaking up. Now, this is old concrete that was built when the airport was built during World War II. It's good, it's strong concrete, it's only six inches thick, and it was strong for the fleet mix that was coming in at the time. Since then, we've been bringing in 737s, we've had 757, 67s, much bigger, much heavier airplanes that are taxiing over this section of concrete, and you can see what it's done. It's broken up that six-inch concrete. So this concrete no longer meets FAA standards. The joint sealer on the terminal ramp itself is wearing out, the paint's faded, it's just old infrastructure. This is if you're standing at the taxiway, looking back towards the terminal, you can see the terminal up there on the right. This is where the aircraft follow the center line, and then they make the turn into the taxi lane, and all that concrete there is starting to break up. Let me go back a slide. If you look at the top right, we call that FOD, it's known as foreign object debris. If a jet engine was to suck up a pebble or a piece of concrete like that, it could destroy the engine, it could blow it up. So the FAA puts a lot of value on these projects to make sure we don't have FOD out there, and we just ensure the best safety we can out at the airport. The slide on the left just shows the phasing, the blue section, it's a very small section of concrete that we're going to be replacing. The green and the yellow is the joint seal portion of the project. I always wonder why FAA concrete costs so much money, and here's why. I thought this is a pretty good image, a good section that shows what we're doing. We're only replacing about 28,000 square feet of concrete. It's 13 inches thick. Old concrete is six inches. And this isn't just the concrete you see out on the street, it's FAA grade, so it's much stronger. Then we have five inches of base, another six inches of base, another 12 inches of base, and another 12 inches of base. So we actually have a four-foot section that we're replacing out there, so it'll be strong enough to hold a 737 aircraft.
There's been a huge shortage of concrete over the past year or so, so I guess my question, my initial question is, okay, this is great, but have we secured, have they secured the concrete? Because we can't have this torn up for ever, I mean, it's, timing is a huge issue here.
Yes, and the contractors here, they can speak to that better than me, but I do know that we were able to secure the material as part of the bid. That was a big challenge, and actually, this thing, this project went out for bid in July. We didn't get any bidders because of that exact issue, Mayor. We didn't have material. So now they're starting to get material, they've reached out and found other suppliers, and I think they're able to set up their own plant and makes concrete here locally at the airport, so they should have access to material, and that is why we had to rebid it, because we couldn't get it in the past.
So with this four foot, so we dig down four feet and start the layering?
That's right.
And while we're doing this, where do planes land and taxi?
So the runway's going to be, and I have a slide for that, I think that's my next slide, there you go. So here's the phasing. The runway won't be impacted. You see Taxiway Bravo, that's the very top portion of this image. Taxiway Bravo, we just have to offset the center line about 30 feet, so we'll have no impact on any of the runways or taxiways. It'll be business as usual. The only impact is going to be right at the terminal. Fortunately, we have two gates and two bridges, and so we can phase it out where we will never, we shouldn't impact any operations, especially commercial operations.
And general aviation won't be impacted?
General aviation won't be impacted. FedEx is just going to have to taxi an extra 40 feet, but they can, they can make it around the construction site.
Okay.
We had three bidders, Future Vest Construction, they had a non-responsive bid, they didn't provide all the material, and they were lacking some of the numbers. Hensel Phelps Construction and Silver Creek Construction, Hensel Phelps is actually teaming up with Reese Albert to do some of the dirt work. Hensel was the low bidder at $2,259,334.60. We ran this number by our engineers and the FAA. The FAA gave us the letter of concurrence, they recommend that we award Hensel Phelps Schedule I and II with the full amount of $2,259,334.60. We ran this number by our engineers and the FAA. The FAA gave us the letter of concurrence. They recommend that we award Hensel Phelps Schedule One and Two the full amount of $2,259,334.60.
And what's the timeframe that this is going to take?
We have the grant in hand, so we're ready. The contractors think that we could do it hopefully early spring during that timeframe, try and beat the really busy construction season. With the new infrastructure bill that got passed, we're really trying to get it done before all these big projects come up, because I think we're gonna have a challenge getting contractors here in San Angelo to do airport work. Airport work is very challenging. I was excited to see Hensel Phelps put a bid in, because they do a lot of airport work in Lubbock, Midland, DFW. They're a good airport contractor.
Lucy, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. I, the mayor just asked about the time limit. You said we could get started now, because the grant had been approved, but how long for completion? How long, how many months would it take for completion?
Do you have a moment, please?
Sure.
I'm Cody Edwards with Hensel Phelps, Project Manager. So, the construction duration, and I'm not sure who asked that, but it's about a three-month duration. And as Jeremy kinda walked through the phasing, that first component where we're actually demolishing and then bringing up the new subgrade layers and placing the concrete, that's the long pole in the tent. That's about two and a half months to do that scope before we move into the next phase, and it's only a few weeks to, you know, rework some of the joint sealants and restore some of that existing joint infrastructure and so forth. And somebody had a great, maybe it was you, Ms. Mayor, the concrete is a big concern. However, the quantity really isn't that enormous. It's sourcing the very specific aggregates necessary for that to be an approved FAA mixed design. That's really where it became problematic. And working with Jeremy and, and the designer in preparation for this solicitation, we were able to kinda plan for that, which is why you're seeing this true start timeframe being in the spring of, of 2022 versus right now. So, we've got a lot planned in, in to make this project a success, and, and I think it will help tremendously out at the apron.
We're looking three to four months from beginning to end, once we start.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
What do we do with all the asphalt we're taking out? Everything we pull out? Where's that go?
The concrete, it's just up to the contractor to remove it and dispose it.
Okay.
Sure. Reese Albert will be removing that. They have great plans for that. It'll probably land in a recycled content somewhere. But there is no asphalt. It's just concrete, just to clarify.
It's just concrete?
Yep.
And you don't crush it before we pull? It's just come out in the junk, is it?
They will likely saw it into manageable pieces and then pull it out and haul it off, and it will likely go to some crushing, one of their facilities, frankly.
I'm good.
Any other questions at this point from council members? All right, continue, Jeremy.
Okay. Here's where it gets challenging, the funding. Because it was split out over so many grants, it's gonna be over Grant 40, which is 100% FAA approved. That was the one that came out during the coronavirus. Grant 44 is also 100% federally funded. We are still a little bit short. What the FAA has allowed us to do is use some of our entitlements from FY '22, this year's entitlements. That grant has not been awarded yet. We think it's gonna be a 90-10 split, so we'll probably have to pay 10% of our share on the remaining $195,415 balance. I do have a fund in my 220 account where we can cover this amount until the FAA grant gets awarded, and then we'll reimburse our fund in full.
There's no concern about getting that entitlement grant?
Nope, nope, no concern at all. The FAA has agreed to, to issue that grant. We're gonna split it between this and the design to convert Runway 927 into Taxiway Hotel.
Okay.
I believe that's it.
Further questions from council on this item? All right, with none, Lucy moved to approve. May I have a second? Second by Tommy. Public comment, please. Is there any? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes six, zero. We'll move into Item B. Consider a resolution allowing the adjacent property owner to remove a tree in the public right-of-way adjacent to 17 West Beauregard Avenue per Section 7.02, .034 of the City Code of Ordinances. And John, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning Development Services. You've seen this before. You may recall, you approved the, the tree removal, but wanted to see back the plans. So, I'm just gonna go through real quickly here and then let the applicant talk to you about their plans more. Here's a picture of the tree right there that they're proposing to remove, and then the, the business. You can see the tree there right on the side of that picture. This was their original graphic that they presented to you, basically showing the tree removed with nothing in its place. And then, this is their revised drawing, showing a single tree being planted, but to the left of the building as you're facing it. Again, the applicant's request was intended to give more visibility to the front of the building, and so by offsetting that tree, they believe it will do that. That's it for me. Unless you have any questions, I'll turn it over to the applicant to explain.
Okay, I have three questions, and I'll ask them, or two for sure, maybe three, before the applicant comes forward. First of all, actually, no, just let Michelle and come forward, and, and then you'll be available to answer questions.
Okay, sounds good.
Good morning. Welcome. The first thing I have is I know there's an adjacent property owner who's very concerned about removing the tree, and concerned that by removing that tree, it's going to impact negatively their foundation and consequently create bigger problems for adjoining properties.
Yes. Here's the thing about that. No matter what, even if we leave the tree, once we take that concrete out to replace the sidewalk, which we've all agreed has to be done. I've talked to three different people that, and we've talked about that, the sidewalk pricing, what's gonna happen, roots. All of them said there's a very good chance the tree's gonna die no matter what. So, we're still-
Is that from a tree expert or just property owners? And so-
No, two of those were tree experts. One's a tree guy. I don't know if he is an expert or not. So, yes, but all of them in agreement just said, I mean, this is our beginning stages, us talking about it. Hey, when we dig down in there, just so you know, this is what we're gonna have to do, cut a bunch of roots and stuff. There's a very good chance that that tree's gonna die anyway.
I know that they worked around that issue in front of Plateau Brewing on Chadburn when they were doing the streetscape program, and they managed to protect the tree, and the tree seems to still be surviving. So, what would be different about that approach versus this approach?
I mean, I don't know. I guess even with them, only time will tell. I don't know how long, you know, it takes to kill a tree if you cut the roots off. Like, I, I really don't know. That's not my expertise. For me, as a business owner, my number one thing is safety. Mason Matthews from the fire department came today because so many people trip outside that building. My daughter just saw somebody trip outside the building. He just saw a couple of people face planted outside that building. Safety's a concern. So, I know the tree is a concern. I, I'm just, for me, it's just, the tree needs to be removed because of safety reasons. You know, I don't, the thing is, is we, if we leave the tree in hopes that whatever they do to the sidewalk doesn't kill a tree at this point, we still might be back here in another six months, a year, you know, whatever that is, with the same thing, if the tree's still living. I just feel like, as a business owner, I have to move forward, and I want to do the right thing for everybody. Right now, the safety of the community is my biggest concern, you know, more than anything. And so, you know, we, that's why we have agreed to replace the tree. So, there is growth. There is a new tree. And then, of course, mirroring it like Chadburn, so it can complement that. I just feel like removal of the tree is going to do a lot of positive things, a lot more than removing the tree. And if you see that removing the tree is a negative, there's a whole lot more positive by taking the tree out.
And I, the other comment I've had is from people is, well, really, the biggest issue and the biggest problem with the sidewalk is the one next door, which I think is in front of the fire department's building that they own. So, even if this one gets improved and problem taken care of, the bigger problem is next door. And so, there has to be, and that's not your problem, obviously, Michelle, so that you're not in charge of their property. But it doesn't alleviate the issue relative to the building next door to you.
Well, I think they are very interested in fixing theirs as well. Again, he, they're the people. I see somebody trip every time I go there, too. I mean, I'm not, I know, I've never seen somebody face planted it. I'm not gonna lie about, like, people trip. I've seen somebody stroll or get, you know, caught on, on that. Mason can probably talk a little bit to that, but we do realize that is an issue. That's the only part of Beauregard where the sidewalk is really, really bad and, and causing safety concerns. And so, you know, I just feel like, as a city, as the downtown area, we, I'm willing to help solve that problem. I believe they are as well. Let's solve that problem. Let's make it nice. Let's make it a safe place to walk. Let's make it look nice, so people will continue, you know, down Chadburn to Concho, to Beauregard. Let's just have a continuation of what we've already done and spent so much time, you know, and resources on, is making it beautiful down there and making it a safe place for people to be able to walk on the sidewalk.
There has been a longstanding philosophy that trees and landscaping in a historic district are a very positive thing for economic development. And what I wanna make sure we don't do is start an avalanche of everyone deciding that trees need to be taken out, because we will not be in the business of agreeing to take out trees without someone agreeing to replant a tree and create landscape, because it softens the environment. And when it's 110 degrees in July and August, no trees are a negative in a historic district. And so, I wanna make sure philosophically that we understand if a tree comes out, a tree goes down. And we cannot be taking trees out without replanting trees. And I appreciate the safety issues. We do need to address that. Obviously, that's a great concern. And, but we also know if you're not taking care of the safety issue to the left or to the right, we really didn't solve a safety issue. And that's not your problem. You're trying to take care of your safety issue. So, questions from council? Yes, Harry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna piggyback on something what you said, Mayor, and that is, we really need to take a look. And we're talking about this particular item on Beauregard, but we've got another issue over on Tuig, the same, same type of thing, where tree has caused sidewalk. If we're going to continue with our South Chadburn project, streetscape, and we want to attract additional people to the downtown area, we've gotta make sure that their safety is, is, is number one. Now, I agree with you. I do not wanna see trees taken out without replacement, but we've gotta find a solution to this particular issue today, and I believe the trees got to come out at one point in time or another. So, why not take it out while we're repairing the concrete and place a new one in there, similar, similar to what we've got on South Chadburn. Same type of tree, same type of landscaping in that particular area.
So, the last comment, and I'm just gonna repeat it again, there's obviously concern for your next-door neighbor who says, you take your tree out, my foundation has, there's a negative impact on my building. Not my building, but the building next door. So, are we sure that by removing this tree, we're not going to have a negative impact on the foundation of the building next door?
Well, I mean, I would say the same, my building's right there as well. So, I, I never had, I've never had anyone brought that, bring that up to me. I've never read anything in my research about that, so I'm not super familiar with that. I do know the neighbor's concerns. I've never seen anything on paper or anything, so I'm not, I, I really don't know. I would say that that would be a concern for my building as well. Obviously, the roots, if they run under that one, they run under ours. I don't know how to address that, because again, I've never read anything about that. So, I, I know they have concerns, but in my reading, that hasn't come up. So, you know, I, I don't know. I, that would, I guess, be somebody else's concern. I mean, you know, expertise. I don't know.
Well, I just know when we're, our doors, when we share common walls, and we all are walking the same sidewalk and using the same mode, we just need to make sure that we don't do damage to somebody else's property, and then if we do, what happens from there? But obviously, you're committed to using this opportunity to improve the sidewalk conditions. You're committed to replanting a tree and landscape to continue to beautify the area. So, those are my comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Lucy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I have a comment about, I don't see the problem about cutting the roots to fix the sidewalk. The tree dies, the tree dies. You can pull it, then replant your trees that you want. So, I would say, I don't see what's wrong with that idea of just leaving the tree and fixing the sidewalk.
Well, if the tree starts to die and those roots start weakening, it could cause the tree to fall, which is all kinds of bigger issues. And so, and my thing, too, is, I mean, I am a small business owner. Money is an issue. So, in order to trim it and do all of this stuff and spend all that money, and then come back again later in six months, whatever, and then taking a tree out that large costs a lot of money. We're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. And so, me, as a business owner, I wanna do it one time, and I wanna do it right the first time. I don't wanna come back in six months or 12 months and redo it, you know, later. I, I just, that, to me, does not make sense as a business owner.
Larry, did you have a comment?
It seems as though this, this problem started about 40 years ago, when they planted an oak tree there, which is, most people know, get exceptionally large. And I'm wondering-
That means it provided exceptionally good shade.
Yes, they do, but we should, and I'm not sure how we do this, but we should limit the type of tree that goes in-
And we are, and all the new landscaping we're putting down, that has been addressed. But it doesn't correct where we're not redoing streetscape or-
Well, and that moves into the other thing, is there's probably other trees down there that are gonna create same problem, depending upon their growth. So-
Deal with those as they come forward. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, do, do we have specifics? This really goes against my grain, but do we have specifics on the size of the tree? We're not talking just a little, a little bitty. Do we know what we're going to get when the new tree is planted?
I think we have to be very specific that we can't plant us, what is it when they're really tiny?
A seed?
No. When a seed is planted, yeah.
I have specs of what they're doing on Chadburn, the sizes and all of that, what types of trees, all of that information. So, again, in order to mirror that, that's what we'll be doing.
Because we don't want just a little. It needs to have the appearance as this sketch is. We would expect that when that tree is planted, that's what it looks like. It's that height.
And I'm not, I'm just in the beginning stages of finding those types of trees and seeing what's available right now. And so, again, I have those specs as my guideline, so I will try to come as close to that as I can.
We just don't want a little thing. We need it to reflect that image.
Got it.
Which is a nice, big tree.
Mm-hmm.
With little roots.
Okay.
With little roots. Now, these trees, actually, the roots grow down now.
Yes.
On purpose, because of this, obviously, like you said, this is a reason that they didn't know that 40 years ago, or however long ago, when they planted these trees. Now, we know that, and we would never plant this tree in this space, you know, but we've gained that knowledge over the years because of this reason. But I do wanna say, you had mentioned, you know, economic growth and things like that, and that's our, I mean, that's our reasoning for opening a business. I mean, and we want it to be as successful as, you know, as possibly can.
And we want it to be as well. It benefits everyone. When yours, when you have success, everyone else has success with you. So, we appreciate that. All right. With that, do we have any further questions for Michelle? Then, may I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
And do we, with that, any public comment?
Sidewalk getting corrected.
Yes. I do wanna, you know, you brought up, if the neighbors aren't willing to do something, we are. So, really interesting, we, we meet there once a month, so we're not there, we're not open during business hours. In the last month, you know, we are the former owner of this ad, of their address as well. So, in the last two months, we've been down there quite a bit, getting the building ready, and I cannot tell you how many people I have seen go all the way to the ground there. Last week, we were meeting about talking about, hey, what are we prepared to do with our side? And while we're talking about it, as I, as the president and leading the meeting, I'm looking out to the street, and someone- and someone goes to the ground as we're talking about it. So we stop the meeting, go outside, we help them up. Uh, this past Saturday, we're having an event in there, three people all the way to the ground. Uh, our members had to go outside and help. I mean, it, it is absolutely an issue and, and ours is worse. Uh, so we are prepared to do, uh, whatever we can. Um, it is, it is very bad. Um, and, uh, safety is obviously, uh, our only, uh, concern there, um, as our business is much different than, than theirs. Um, I, I, you know, we talk about, um, money and, um, you know, Michelle mentioned as a small business owner, money's an issue. As a nonprofit, money is even a bigger issue for us. Uh, so we fixed the sidewalk and in two years, we're back here again and the sidewalk's messed up again. We just can't do that. Um, so, you know, you know, you talked about removing the tree. Does that create foundation issues? I would second, I, I would go further and say, trees staying there could create a foundation issue. It is now. Uh, so, uh, that's, that's, obviously, safety is our only concern there. We are prepared to do whatever we need to do as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mason.
Could we get your name and affiliation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mason Matthews, um, I live at 3825 Deerfield Road, but I'm the president of the Fire Fighters Association at 15 West Beauregard.
Do we need in that motion, anything more specific than the questions that were asked and the answers that came forward as part of the motion?
It might not hurt to specify the Chadburn, that it's going to be in the same design and the same kinds of trees that are on the Chadburn project.
Would you do that, Harry?
Motion should be amended to say that the tree that we're talking about to be replanted on this property should be the same as the South Chadburn project.
And the size is relative to depicting the size in this picture. That would be the motion. And then the second is, okay, so we're up for public comment?
I think Larry and I both seconded, so I agree with that.
Okay, good. Please offer your comment, Sylvia.
Yes. Um, Mayor, I just think that once you do this, you're going to, you all are opening something to every business. Um, I own a, a building and for years I have not been able to open it because of all the, the red tape. If you're going to do something for somebody, be, uh, to all, I understand this lady because she's a woman. I voted for you because you're a woman and you're a businesswoman. But as for me, I think that y'all got to be fair to everybody that comes up here as a business because I'm losing money every single day. I have to ask for help sometimes from y'all, from the city, for the fact that I have not been able to open my building. So, uh, my neighbor had a tree there, too. Y'all never let, half of it was dead, half was it alive. Y'all never let her tear it down. So if you're going to do this, y'all could have to be fair to everybody. And if you're starting this, be, just be fair to everybody when we need something done as small people that own buildings, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I ask.
Thank you very much. With that, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven, I mean, six, zero. We will move on to item C, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance extending the temporary changes to Chapter 12, Article 12.04 Signs of the City Code of Ordinances to allow additional time for preparation of permanent amendments to the sign ordinance. John?
Thank you. Again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. You may remember a little over a year ago, year and a half ago, uh, we brought forward some changes to the sign ordinance specifically to remove the distinction between onsite and offsite signs. And that was based on a Fifth Circuit Court decision, uh, on a case out of Austin, uh, with a billboard company. And so we, we did a quick fix to basically fix the main parts of our ordinance that were problematic, uh, based on that court decision. Uh, you all gave us a deadline of the end of this year to bring back a more permanent change to the ordinance, uh, which we've drafted, uh, an ordinance and we're, uh, close to being ready to bring it forward through the adoption process. But then the Supreme Court agreed to hear that case out of Austin, which they did just earlier this month. And so, given the fact that they just heard the arguments and have not made a decision yet, uh, we're asking to, for an additional year delay, uh, in that permanent, uh, change to the sign ordinance so that we can wait and hear, uh, what the Supreme Court has to say because we don't want to bring an ordinance and then in six months have to bring something back because they changed something else. Uh, and so that's basically all this, uh, request is doing, is extending that timeframe to bring back the sign ordinance for an additional year, uh, by the end of 2022.
My first question is the fine. Um, I want to make sure that, uh, there's no authority given to your, um, area of responsibility for administrative approv, approval of things like those big billboard signs that unfortunately have shown, that have shown up in the cultural district and have now shown up in the historic district. They're an eyesore. They're terrible. They should never have been allowed. But because we gave you administrative authority to approve those, they got approved. I want to know if this changes that, if this modifies the ordinance to make sure that doesn't happen again? Or is this just something totally separate and we need to address the other issue at the same time?
The short answer is that we'll have to address that at the same time as we bring back an ordinance. This does not change anything about our current ordinances. Uh, however, under our current ordinances, there are areas where the ordinance says billboards are allowed in these areas and not allowed in those areas. And so when come, someone comes into our office, uh, seeking a permit for a billboard, we don't have any discretionary review. We simply look at the ordinance. Is it in an area where the ordinance says billboards are allowed? If yes, then we issue the permit. If it's not in one of those areas, then we deny the permit. Uh, so this doesn't change any of that. Part of the sign ordinance we'll be bringing back, uh, is a discussion of where should the, where should billboards be allowed and where should they not be allowed. And in fact, we've talked about bringing that as a discussion item uh, to the planning commission and council, uh, before we bring back the full ordinance while we're still waiting.
We need to do that. We have to do that because we can't allow those things to keep happening. They're, they impact negatively. They're not what, they're an eyesore and they're not things that we want to see happening. And it happened, not once, but twice. And once it's done, we're, it's done. And it's really a negative.
I will add one more thing, that the downtown district expansion that you just approved on consent, on second reading, that expanded the area, um, and that downtown district specifically prohibits billboards. So now the area within which billboards can't be in the downtown area has been expanded. Uh, so unfortunately, had that been adopted before those billboards came in, we could have said no. Uh, they just happened to basically get their foot in the door before, uh, that was finalized.
Wow, what you're putting, bringing today will allow that situation as we're referencing as far as a downtown sign from not happening, um, until something further is done by councils. This extends.
And also, the, the initial one we're talking about, really was pertaining to the, the ordinance and the zoning. It was allowed on the property. So it wasn't anything we could have administratively approved or disapproved. It was just allowed.
Wait a minute, say that again? That didn't sound right.
So initially, the sign that we're talking about, uh, that was referenced was not administratively approved. That is allowed, uh, under the zoning. There's nothing staff could have done one way or the other to disapprove that. Um, this that John brings today protects that area from that happening in the future.
Is there a problem? Okay.
Well, like, like I said, we, we, we can bring back a discussion item for you all. Where do, where do you want to not allow billboards in the future? Where do you want to? What's the process for approving those? Uh, so we can get that ball rolling even while we're still waiting on the Supreme Court. We just won't be able to, or we're recommending not adopting the final version of that ordinance until after the Supreme Court has decided. But we can, we can definitely be working on it and bring something to you all, uh, before, uh, this is decided.
So, very specifically, what does this do?
This simply extends the current ordinance that we have for another year, giving us time to work on that, uh, ordinance amendment.
Can you explain what that current ordinance is? Because we brought one to you about a year ago. So explain.
What's that?
Yeah, we basically changed the ordinance to eliminate the distinction between onsite signs and offsite signs. So what the, what the Fifth Circuit Court said was, you basically can't read a sign, uh, and look at the content in order to regulate it. So the, our, our older ordinance said, uh, signs that were for the business on that property can be so big. Signs that advertise something not on that property can be so big and only allowed in certain places. We can no longer make that distinction. If they want to put a sign up on, uh, you know, if McDonald's wants to put a sign on their property that advertises for the car dealer down the street, they can do that because we can't distinguish based on content.
And so to prevent, uh, a large billboard sign from going in in an area where we didn't want it, what did your change do to prohibit that?
Uh, basically just reworded the ordinance to allow the large signs, which we're calling billboards now. But it, it, again, we don't distinguish on content any longer, but we still say the larger signs can only be in certain areas. And right now, those certain areas are the same as they've been for the last 20 years, uh, mostly industrial areas and then certain designated street corridors.
And in the downtown corridor, you, we prohibited those things?
Yes, the historic zoned areas, uh, the downtown district, um, those are completely prohibited for billboards.
About the cultural district. Remind us about the cultural district and whether that cultural district has been approved by this council.
Well, you approved the concept of a cultural district, and I should add that the cultural district and River Corridor districts both also prohibit billboards. Uh, we had come to you all with an expansion of the cultural district. Uh, and then there was some, you know, there was some argument for making it smaller or bigger. You may recall Howard Taylor came and talked about wanting it to match his cultural district. And so we agreed to bring that back at some point. Um, our first step was bringing back the downtown district that you all just approved today on final reading. Um, one of our next steps is to bring back that cultural district expansion.
Problem is, just like the downtown district and this district, we're slow in getting it to the table. So consequently, those billboards were approved. And once approved, they don't go away.
So the cultural district does not allow the billboards or does?
It does not allow billboards, but right now, the cultural district boundary is what was in the old River Corridor district, which is really just the museum and a, you, two or three blocks around it and the fort. But it doesn't expand it all the way to match Howard Taylor's, uh, district.
This one billboard is somewhere between the fort and the museum?
That's right. It's in an area that was just, you know, just outside. It wasn't in the downtown district, wasn't in River Corridor, wasn't in the cultural district. It's one of those, there was a sign company, uh, on, on both of these that just happened to look at our maps and, and find the one spot that a billboard was allowed, both on the north end and the south end of, of Chadburn and, and the other ones on Oaks.
So we could bring back that if you want to look at that cultural district overlay as far as being enlarged, um, could we, when could we bring that back?
We could take it to the planning commission in the next month or two.
Any other further questions for John on this item? With none, may I have a motion for approval of, um, item C?
I'll move.
Seconded by Harry. Any public comment? With none, we'll, um, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes six, zero. Move on to item D, discussion and possible action on the following redistricting items as a result of the 2020 census. One, public hearing to receive comments from the public regarding redistricting and the proposed new boundaries for the City of San Antonio City Council's single member districts. Two, discussion and possible action to consider and adjust proposed redistricting plans. And three, discussion and possible action to approve a resolution approving the final redistricting plan. And Julia, you're on. Or John, you're on, or-
Well, I'll start off and Julia may tag team and Teresa may have some things to add as well. Um, this is the item that you heard at your last meeting. Uh, as you mentioned, the city charter does require the, uh, districts to be looked at after every census, every 10 years. Uh, what the consultant in this case found was that, um, our population had grown more in the south. And so those districts had too many people, uh, putting them out of balance. And so basically, this is a, a redrawing of those district lines to rebalance the population, uh, again, with the goal of making all of the districts roughly equal. It's, you know, you can't make it perfectly equal, uh, but shooting for a tolerance in the, you know, 5% or less, uh, variation between districts. Um, we talked last time a little bit about this. The, uh, one of the goals is to, um, ensure that there's, um, balance in terms of ethnic background in each of the districts. Uh, the two districts, three and four, that were previously, uh, majority-minority districts will remain so. Uh, and so that, that won't be changing. And you can see there that we had some population in the city decrease among ethnic groups and some increase. Here's the proposed map and there'll be some zoom in maps. You can see this better. But this is just to show that there are four different areas where the map boundaries, uh, are being changed. Here's a little bit closer look. And so, uh, again, District Six and District One here, uh, both basically had too much population. And so up here, um, population was shifted from six north and likewise from one up to three. And let me go to those individual areas. So, uh, the first area here is moving population mostly from six to two in that block, also from six to two. This area is actually an area without any population, uh, but it's moving from five to two, basically to tie these two areas together so that they're contiguous. Otherwise, this area would be cut off from two. So then the new two boundary would, would ultimately look something like that, adding all of that to two, again, with the goal of shifting population from six to two to help balance those out. The, the change in the population there, you can see each of these, uh, tables will be on, on each change. So I'm going to go through these quickly. Stop me if you have questions. Um, this is another area, uh, in this, in that same zone, uh, from six to five, uh, again, moving, trying to get population out of six. Uh, and then in this case, shifting some of that to five, uh, to help balance that out as well. And in Area Two, this is just moving a small, I think it's three or four blocks, uh, of property from, uh, SMD Four to SMD Five. Uh, again, that was just a small change to help get that balance that we were looking for. Uh, the third change here is, uh, an, a small area from SMD Six to SMD One. Uh, you might ask, you know, six had too many and one had too many. Why are we moving from one that had too many to another one? But that was basically to help get population out of six. Uh, we, because six is adjacent to, to one, we already moved some out of six on the north. This was to move some more out of six into one on the south, uh, which leads to the fourth one. We had to move a lot of population from one to three. Um, and so that was sort of a shift from, from six to one, and then more was moved out of one into three. Uh, this is the biggest change. You can see about 2,300 people moving out of one into three. Uh, and again, with that goal of, of getting to roughly balanced population. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Larry, do you have a question or comment?
If you would go to that, uh, next slide, during that meeting, there were some folks that suggested that that was a populated area, that little filler that you've got in there. Did you do any, um, check on that to see if in fact, uh, there were residents living there?
Yes, I, I think some of the confusion was just, uh, some of the mapping. It was hard to tell where those lines were drawn. Uh, but yes, that entire area here, uh, is all either vacant or commercial or industrial property. There's, there's no population within that area.
So with that, even though there's no population, you still change the SMD that's assigned to it?
Yeah. And again, that was to ensure that this area and this area could be touching. Uh, we, we couldn't move this population into two without it touching two. And so this, this gets you that little, uh, boundary where they, they touch up against each other.
Okay. Questions from other council members?
This may not be germane right now, but, uh, as you probably noted, a federal court, uh, held that Texas's redistricting, as they saw, was erroneous. Is that going to have any impact on the state and then the county and then us?
No, I don't believe so. I might let Teresa answer that, though.
My understanding is that was dealing with the state lines and has nothing to do with what we're doing today.
Well, the state lines, meaning redist, I mean, redistricting of the state in certain areas where there were population switches.
Right.
But this area was not one of those areas that there was concern about in terms of redistricting.
Well, local offices aren't the offices that they're concerned about. It's for the districts related to state and federal offices that they were concerned about.
But as to- But as to when it will be finalized, the finalization of, of the redistricting, does that have a time impact on us?
In terms of the elections, because right now, there's a March election planned to primary, so if the state hasn't gotten a final approval for theirs, does that go downline to the county and then to the city?
Vanna's in the back, and she's shaking her head as no, so I'm going to go with her no.
Okay, so the answer is, what we're doing here today will not be impacted, or cannot, it will not be impacted by whatever the federal lawsuit is against the state of Texas's redistricting plan. Is that correct?
That appears to be true, yes.
Okay. Larry, any further comments or questions?
Thank you.
Lucy?
When did you say this was due?
Teresa or Julia on that?
During the meeting on Thursday, I believe the consultant said February 7th.
So we have to get it in by February 7th. So if something was, if something was to go on, we'd have from now, and we could approve it in the January meeting, correct?
That is correct. We were trying to get it approved as quickly as possible to help out the county, and the notices that they have to send out, but after conversations with Vanna, if we absolutely cannot get it approved today, it's going to require a different mailing, but it might require that anyway.
I'm not seeing any objection from anyone on the proposed map right now from council members. Is that correct? All right, so with that, we will take a motion. Well, after I get a motion, I'll ask for public comment. Yes. Okay, so I need a motion by Harry, and a second by Tommy. Now, we will open it up for additional public comment.
It's okay, I do it all the time. It's not unusual.
Lucy's no. Lucy just started.
Good morning, Councilwoman Mayor. Shirley Spears, resident of Single Member District Five. I was in the meeting on this past Thursday, and I know there was a lot of discussion, I guess, for a little over an hour, as we worked through the questions and concerns. We had talked about the consultant being available to look at redrawing some things for, I believe it was District Three. I don't know if the gentleman that was complaining and can have his concern about that, I don't know if that actually took place. My question is, did it take place, or was there ever any serious consideration for the redrawing of Three, based on all the concerns that came out of the meeting on Thursday?
Two things. One, Julia, you'll answer that if you would, and then if that person is in the audience, is that person in the audience today? All right, so let's do this, let's, gentle, if you would please come forward, sir, and let's hear from you directly, not indirectly, and then we will add comment, okay?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Kilo Perez. I'm a resident of Single Member District One. I have a business that's in Single Member District Three. Actually, was raised in Single Member District Three, so I've been here in San Angelo for over 55 years, so I'm a long-term resident of San Angelo, Texas. I did speak with a gentleman, I think his name's Mr. Bass, but with the time constraints that we have, and I'm not familiar with the tools that his company uses. I'm not familiar with the actual data that he has in his system. So we weren't able to really finalize anything. I don't think there was any really seriousness on his behalf. I think his company has already decided on the boundaries of the single-member districts here in San Angelo. But it's my opinion that, based on the criteria that we have, as far as the data that's been given to us by the City of San Angelo, or by his company, you know, the total population increase, 99% of the population in the total increase in San Angelo is Hispanic. And we have Single Member District Three, which gained in, in residents, but percentage-wise, their voting strength has been diluted by 4.7%. Having that, having that, knowing that the 99% of the increase in population in San Angelo is Hispanic, we're diluting the Hispanic vote or Hispanic strength in order to elect our representatives by 4.7%. That may not seem like a lot to you, but the last four or five years, we've been having a lot of close elections that have been decided, in some cases, by one vote, by as few as 10 votes. So it's very important that the strength of the Hispanic voting abilities not be diluted by bringing in populations from another district that is a majority Anglo.
Now, let me ask the city clerk. In, in District Three, Julia, were there other increases in other areas? If you'll just read the percentages and the numbers that were increased?
In District Three, the, in the voting age population, the Anglo vote went up by 1.2. The black vote went up by .04, and American Indian down by .1, Asian up by .32, and then Hispanic down by 3.31, Hawaiian Pacific Islander up by .07, Other is up by .15, and then multiracial up by about 1.5%.
Continue, sir.
Thank you. Like I was saying before, the, the district went down by 4.7% as far as the population, as far as the Hispanic percentage of residents that live there. Now, as a whole, as the city as a whole, the city as a whole, it's 52% minority. Now, it's the majority is a minority here in San Angelo, Texas. So my concern is that, I don't believe that legitimately that everything's been done to see other options as far as the district lines is concerned. And I think that maybe we should get a second opinion, since we still have till February 7th. Get a different company to come in and look at the data and see if there's other options. We got one side, maybe we can get another, another mind, or several other minds, to see other options as far as the districting of single-member districts here in San Angelo.
Julia or Tracy, you want to make comment on that?
We're using the consultant that the county is using. It was suggested that we do that because of a cost savings, because they're familiar with the data. We are pretty far into this already, and we have paid a significant portion of the consultant fee, but whatever council directs us to do, we'd be happy to look into.
Lucy?
Yes, did Mr. Bass give you any indication that he would be willing to sit down with y'all and actually look at this and see if there was a different way to redistrict?
Well, the thing is, is that...
I know you said he made up his mind.
Yes, yes, yes. The thing is, is that it was mentioned to us that we should come up with the boundaries, when we don't have the staff. I don't have the staff. I don't have the time. I have a business to run.
That's why I'm asking.
So we don't, we don't, we don't have the staff, so we need a serious consideration of other options, and that serious consideration has not been offered.
So Julia, on District Three, you want to go back and review those numbers with us and show us the map that would show the shifting of population in or out of District Three?
So, so SMD One, there was 2,307 folks that moved from District One into SMD Three to try to balance the populations. And so these are the percentage of people that were moved out of three, out of one into three that you can see here.
So you added additional 916 people from Hispanic out of SMD One to SMD Three?
That's correct.
And Anglo, 1122. So the largest increase is adding Anglo into SMD Three. Is that your concern, sir?
Yes, that is my concern. That is my concern. Now, we have an increase, we have an increase of Hispanic population in all the districts as far as looking at the maps that have been drawn by the consultant. So District One, Hispanic population increases by 4.25%. District Two increases by 4.4%. District Four increases by 2.6%. District Five increases by 6.6%. District Six increases by 7.5%. And then we have the majority, the, the biggest district of Hispanic population, District Three, going down by 4.7%.
So the Hispanic representation, if approved by this, would be a lower percent than exists today?
Correct. That's a big problem.
But did the Hispanic percentage go up in the other six districts?
Yes, that's what I'm telling you. The percentage went up in all the districts except District Three, which is majority Hispanic.
But we can't help where they live?
No, we can't. We can't help where they live. Of course, we know, and it's, it's, it's not going to make a difference, but we know that the Hispanic population here in San Angelo was not, they were not all counted because of the...
And we can't help that.
Right, we can't help that, but we got to go by the numbers that are here.
That's correct.
But knowing the history of past, past censuses and past district redistricting, the trust is not there to, we don't trust the numbers that have been presented by the consultant, by the City of San Angelo. So we would like to have another opinion from a different consultant.
I don't believe at this point we'd be hiring another consultant, quite honestly, and furthermore, having some, I don't believe, and I'm, this is my thought process, I don't, we'll find out from legal, but the idea that we would hire another consultant sometime within the next few days and have them look at this and make a final decision and change this up by the February, whatever date, 7th, is probably not realistic. I'm not sure that could happen.
I do have that concern that there are not a lot of firms who do this kind of work in Texas, and right now, all of them are in the heat of the moment of getting all of this finalized, so I think it would be really difficult. I think we could ask Mr. Bass if he would sit down with, you know, we, there was a conversation that took place at the end of the meeting the other night. We could ask for a longer amount of his time to go back through maps, if that's what you would like us to do, but I don't think it's going to be feasible by February 7th to hire somebody else completely.
Did you not get the answers that you needed from Mr. Bass on Thursday? So what questions still remain from your perspective?
I just think that the dilution of, of the voting strength of the Hispanic population is, is a concern. It's a concern. It's always been a concern.
It went up in the other districts, is that correct?
It went up in the other districts.
So it was, okay, the growth was overall in the Hispanic?
Yes, it was.
Category.
It is.
So San Angelo's growth came from the Hispanic community?
Correct.
And it grew in multiple areas in the City of San Angelo, so...
According to the data that's been presented?
According to the information that people filled out called the census?
Correct, correct.
That's where they said they lived, and that's where they were counted. Would that be correct?
I don't know, I didn't count them.
I know, but, okay, we didn't either, but somebody got a form, somebody filled out that form, that form was sent in, and then the information was collected. And that's what we're looking at in terms of numbers, right?
The set of numbers we're looking at?
Yeah.
That have been presented.
All right, so we got to deal with the numbers as presented, and we're certainly seeing growth in the Hispanic community, but the Hispanic community has also chosen not to just live in SMD Three.
Correct. I live, I live in Single Member District One.
Yeah, so...
So I, I understand that. I understand that.
All right.
You know, my concern is always the representation of the Hispanic population in, everywhere, but also where the majority of the district is Hispanic, I'm concerned about their voting strength being diluted.
All right, just a minute, Lucy, you have a question?
I had a question. You know, when Matt, when Bass was talking that night, he wanted you and Ms. Spears to get together and submit a plan.
Submit a plan.
Right. Now, is he not willing to work with y'all and come up with a plan together?
I don't know. I don't know.
You didn't ask him?
I don't, I don't know.
Well, Julia and Teresa, did you ask him?
There has to be time, there has to be time.
Yeah, but we're not determining the deadlines, okay, because the government gave us the deadlines. My question is the following: Were the questions that they asked for, was he willing to address those questions, and did he answer those questions presented that night in terms of everyone being satisfied? Because we can't change the numbers, and we can't change the deadlines that are presented to us. Those things we have to limit.
No, he did answer some of my que, he did answer some of my questions.
Okay, that's good.
He did answer the questions.
Okay, so the questions you have remaining, those questions that you still have remaining are what?
The, the dilution of the population in Single Member District Three. That's my problem. Because you got to remember that, that we don't always going to trust the consultants. You know, there's been a history of manipulating data where the majority of the, at certain areas are minorities. So there's been in the past manipulation of those datas, and I still have a concern, and many people in my district still have that concern, and many people within the City of San Angelo have that concern. Not just because they're not here, doesn't mean they don't have a concern, but there's a concern for the manipulation of data, so we would like to see some other options.
Okay, so what would be the potential options?
Mayor?
Yes, Tommy?
If I am hearing correctly, in order to shift population from one single-member district into another, they must be contiguous, they must be touching. So let's go, go to the one that, the big, the, can you, is there any way you can get that bigger on the screen, that number four block?
Well, we really need number three and number one, because that's the complaining one.
No, 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 no. On number, look at that number four block. Can we, can we make that any?
Oh, I see.
Any bigger?
But then you have to realign four again.
All right. So the area that we have, if I am, if I am hearing correctly, from which to move any of the population from one into three, is that area right there? Is that correct, Julia? So if you, if you just look at, that is a small, geographically, that is a small area. I don't know that we're going to get there because of, if, if, we can't change the fact that the district, that the, they have to touch. We can't do anything about that.
No, we can't.
That's where they touch, right there, is the, in that, in that really narrow area. So you've got to then reach down into District One to get just the number of people to pull up into District Three, just so the population. I don't know how we're going to get there. I don't care what the consultant comes up with, I, I, we're just not going to get there. You know, we, we can, Kilo can get with him, and I don't think it's going to change one thing, because we got to, we got to ba, balance the population in there. And he's doing his best, I believe, to make sure, based on the people that live on those streets, that there's as much equity in the distribution of ethnicities as possible. I don't know how we're going to get where we're, where we are making District Three equal to or greater than where it was before. I don't know how you get there. That's the only place we got to work with geographically, right there. So to me, we're having a discussion that is headed absolutely nowhere. So we need, I, I, I think we, you know, i, i, if, if he didn't have anything the other night, Kilo, is that anything he addressed with you the other night?
The comment you just made, those are the typical comments that we've heard before.
Well, Kilo, you're looking at the map. Where in fact?
I'm looking at the map.
Where in fact can it come from? Where can it come from?
We need to look at the data closer. I can't just look at the map. I got to look at the data.
We got to look at the map, because that's where we got the, the...
But the data is the data. We're not going to change the data. It is the numbers. Those are the numbers reported from the census. So we can't change the data, and we have to live under the following rules: They must be contiguous.
Contiguous, correct.
And that the numbers are the numbers. So I think the issue is... So I think the issue is your challenges, and we hear your challenges. We understand your concern that we are diminishing the impact of a specific ethnicity within a district. On the other hand, when you get into the reality of trying to accomplish that, the challenge seems to be, can't get it done because of the issues we just talked about. Is that correct?
And, you know, that, it just seems to me that there's no more, when you look on the, on the District three, as it comes down there to Turner Street and Warehouse, that's a commercial district over there, so there's very, very few residents over there. It's got the majority there in XYZ, San Jacinto, Julian, Antonio Street, the, those are our populated areas. And then, then you've got to come over into District one. And again, it goes back to, it is what it is with the people that live there. And, and he's, he has grabbed his, the, the number, and the ethnicity is what it is there. I don't know how you get there. I'm, Kilo, I'd be, I'd be more than glad and willing to see if we can't get there, but I don't know because unless you start, you know, literally doing one block at a time, and I assume he may have looked at that, I don't know that. But you don't have that much area in there that is populated with, with residential. So again, I don't, I don't see how we get there.
Julia, any comment? You worked with him, and John, the two of you are the ones who worked with him most closely, with the consultant?
So Mr. Bass pulled in by the census block, that's the level we have to go by? So you may see Logan Street, and you may say, oh my goodness, that's 100% Anglo. That doesn't do us any good. You don't pull that street in by itself, you pull the entire census block. Additionally, you have to get through maybe a highly Anglo section of town to get to a more densely populated minority group of town. So it's very complicated. The map that I believe he showed Mr. Perez after the meeting indicates by density, the population. So you can see how far you have to go down into maybe that area to get more of the minority voters. So it's very complicated. You can't just pull in one little section. And as you said, it has to be contiguous and further complicated. It has to be at the census block area. So it's, it really is a convoluted process.
It's a block, not a street, and not a half a street.
Thank you.
Sorry I didn't make you happy today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's District, uh, single member District five. So I'm going back to the comments that Mr. Perez has, and when we talked with Bass on Thursday. And of course, he is doing the redistricting, the mapping and all of that also for the county. Now, when we were working on this for the county, there was a concern that the firm, the Bass firm, was not being as responsive as we needed them to be for Tom Green County. Because there were some outstanding questions that we had, that we wanted the consultant to respond to, that I know Commissioner Bacon had addressed to the firm, but they never responded. This particular firm is working in most of the cities and counties in the state of Texas. You're right, Teresa, there are very few. But I guess where I have a problem with what Mr. Perez asked, what Mr. Bass promised, they just don't seem to work. Now, he's the consultant that's getting paid to do this. He has the data. And that is his responsibility to help you all come up with the redrawing of whatever has to be done. So if we will go back to number four on the map for just a moment, I, I'd like to point out something. And again, Mr. Perez, nor I, are trained on the tools that Mr. Bass and his firm uses. All we're asking, can we go back to the map that was map number four? Area four. Where it was showing the distribution from one to three.
The statistical one.
Yes.
Not the map, but the chart.
Well, the map is there on the side. So when you look at what Mr. Perez is saying, and, and I know we've seen this across the state of Texas, because preclearance is no longer a part of this. They gutted that out in 2013. But we still have to be sensitive to the comments that Mr. Perez made. So you have 1,122, 48% of Anglo, and then you have Hispanic, 39.7. You have a total of 2,307 people that's involved in this recommended change. Now, why can't Mr. Bass sit down and talk with Mr. Perez, myself, or any other citizens, and actually show us, as opposed to just saying, well, the data says this, and the data says that, and we have to keep up? We understand that, we know that numbers matter, we get that. But what we don't get is, this seems very clearly that, it, it is very clear that the Hispanic population is being diluted.
Now, wait a minute. Yeah, wait a minute, let me clarify that. Because this is, let's make sure we look at the total picture here. This is the number added to the existing population. What you don't see is the total population, and if there's a dilution in the total population by race. This is only the addition to that SMD, so...
Correct. And so there are 1,122 more Anglos being moved into District three.
Yes, but we don't know what the dilution, if there is a dilution in total, because you also had growth in Hispanic in all areas. So the question mark is, if you add these numbers to the existing numbers in SMD three, what is the breakdown percentage-wise in that district?
And to your statement, Madam Mayor, when we talked about this on Thursday, these are the types of things that I think Mr. Perez was asking.
I wasn't there on Thursday.
Yeah, I understand. And so this is the kind of thing that we're asking him to explain. He's the consultant, he works for the people, we realize he works for the city. But the constituents are concerned about how this is done. We asked him, and I remember asking specifically, do you have the ability to show us what it would look like? Give us another example? That's all we're asking for, is to show us what potentially could change. We understand the data is what it is. But is there another way so that at least the number, because everything is moving south? All the residential development is moving south. And we're just trying to think of the future. What is it going to be like in the next 10 years when we do another census, right? And then we have to redistrict again? We're just asking that the consultant be a little bit more sensitive to what the constituents are asking, and that you all not just rubber stamp what he has recommended because he has the data. Well, we have access to the data too, but what can we do with it without the fancy tool? And that's what we're asking for Mr. Bass to do, is to sit down, take some time with the money that he's being made, being paid, Teresa. We're not asking even necessarily for another one. But why can't he take the time, now that we're dealing with the city? Because I'm going back to the fact that they did not take the time when we were dealing with the county redistricting. So I'm just very concerned that the Bass firm is not being as sensitive to the citizens of San Angelo and Tom Green County as he needs to be. And we're just asking for him to take that time and explain it.
All right, so I say two things. One, number one, I want to know what the SMD ethnicity in total is once you add this 2307 to that district, so we understand what those breakdowns are. And then number two, we realize that the Hispanic population in Tom Green, City of San Angelo, grew in all districts. So the representation might or might not be as diluted as you think it is in this district, but it increased in all districts in the city of San Angelo.
But you've got to go by voting blocks also, Mayor, you've got to look at the...
Oh, no, I know, but that's the other thing we're talking about, the census, these census blocks are census blocks, which means you can't just move a street within that census block. You have to move the whole block. And that's where it becomes tricky. Now, that being said, I think your, your questions, the comments made, the consultant should respond to the questions. That's why we pay him, is to do the best job possible for the citizens of San Angelo. And if we don't think he was as responsible, as responsive as he should have been, challenge exists. But the question, Teresa and Julia, is, do you think he tried? Did he make any effort to address their issues?
Your first question, in SMD three, the 3.1% decrease was in the voting age population of SMD three for Hispanics. And overall population in SMD three did decrease by 4.7%. So there was a decrease in SMD three. There was an increase in the other five SMDs. It's also worth noting that this 2,307 folks that were impacted, whenever Mr. Bass did his calculations of what the ideal population size was, SMD six was over by 2,000, and SMD three was under. So there were a significant number of people that left SMD three in the last 10 years.
They moved.
So, so there was a reason that there were so many folks that needed to be balanced. And in regards to Mr. Bass, whenever he left Thursday evening, he did feel that he had been responsive to the citizens.
Well, he did, did we? I don't care what he thought, did we think he was responsive?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I was there, and staff and the consultant were the last to leave the building. The citizens had left, they, there were some who had spent time with him. They left, and so I, I don't, I was not, I did not witness the conversations, hear the substance of the conversations. But I did see people spend time with him, and they left before he did. So I don't know how responsive he was, but he was there until the appetite for his time was satisfied on Thursday night.
Tommy, you had a question or comment?
Julia, what is the Hispanic population of District three? What percentage?
That's what I asked, that's what I asked her to combine the two.
I want to know the percentage.
The voting age population in District three Hispanic is 59.04. And in 2010, it was 62.35. That's the difference of the 3.31. Total population percentage-wise is 62.12% now, down from 66.82 in 2010. And that's the 4.7% decrease.
But the Hispanic in that district is still nearly 60%?
Over 60, total population, 59.04 voting age, correct.
Any move we're going to make is not going to move this 1%, is it? So there's still a predominantly Hispanic district there. I don't think it dilutes, Charlotte, I don't think what we're talking about is going to dilute that. And plus, with the population as ages, the Hispanic population's even going to grow in percentage there, if we go from 59 to 64 total. I don't think we're going to solve it with what discussions we have. I understand your concern, but I understand we're on a timeline. We don't have the funds to go hire somebody else. But I look at, every district here has gotten a growth in Hispanic, except District three. But Hist, District three is still 60% Hispanic. So I don't feel like it personally dilutes the Hispanic influence on the vote. I don't know where we sit from there, but I just think, just looking at the basic numbers, I don't know if we move it any. If we can change it enough to change them from 58 to 59 to 61, they're still going to have the majority of the representation in that district, which I don't think dilutes how they go to vote when it goes to the district. I mean, I'm just making a comment there, but I, I think, when you look at the total, I don't think we can change it to make any points.
Lucy?
I was going to say, due to the fact that it's 60% still Hispanic, I think our main problem is that they don't go and vote. And that's where we need to get on it and start telling them, hey, look, this many people came into our district or their district, and now you have to make it, apparently, you want things to change, you're going to have to get up and go vote. Because that is the main problem. When they do not vote in a local election, that means a lot to the city, especially for you to be represented. So that is my thing, is, it doesn't, I mean, it, as long as you're still 60% in District three, get registered and get those votes out there, get up and go vote. And then you can make a difference in that SMD three.
Okay, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm going to take my seat. If Mr. Perez is okay with that, then I will be okay with that. I still think that the consultant needs to spend quality time. I realize he was standing there, and some people were talking to him after the meeting on Thursday. But that's not the same thing as sitting in a conference room with the tool and drawing and making examples. I realize the population is still not going to be that much of a difference. But in 10 years, as we, we already know from an economic development perspective, in 10 years, it's going to look a lot different than it does today in terms of the residential build, and who is moving into those large lots and acres and all that kind of thing. So I just want to make sure that, and I think the council hears the concern, we just still feel that Mr. Bass, standing there, having conversation, and, you know, we're dealing with the numbers, is not the same thing as sitting in a conference room, looking on a screen together, sharing a computer view together, to say, okay, now, if we do this, and take that, and move that up here, and move that over here. That's what we're asking for, is for him to provide that level of expertise that he's being compensated for, to talk with the citizens and give us other examples.
Thank you very much.
I think I, I know the problem in our district. As a senior citizen, a lot of us seniors, we're seniors on that side of town. But we have a lot of new houses getting built. We're getting all kinds, you know, blacks, whites, anything, we're getting there. The thing is that we Hispanics have given up on going to vote because we, I'm sorry, Harry, we're not being representative like we should. That's, I think, what they're trying to get across. Because of the fact is that, yes, we're getting a lot of things built, you know, businesses in the back of, you know, where I lived, in the front, you know. But the thing is that they just quit going to vote, like Lucy says. We quit, I still go and vote. But a lot of people are, have given up on the city because we are not getting representative like we should. When they have a problem, we do not get answers. And that's the problem. I think that's what Mr. Perez is trying to tell you all, that Hispanic vote is dilating, or whatever that word is. Because really, to me, that's what I think it is. Because for the fact is that we have given up on going to vote. A lot of elderly people. And I guess that we have to go out and vote. Lucy, you're right. But we do need to get educated people to represent us and that want to represent us the way we Hispanics need to be representative. Because I think that we are underrepresented because of a lot of things that could be built over there and that could help us, Mayor, and we're not getting it done. And that's why I think they quit voting.
Thank you again for your comments.
I'm glad this map is up because it reiterates what I want to talk about. And that is, I talked to Mr. Bass on Thursday night. Why aren't there no streets names on that map? Why can't you look at it and know exactly what is being moved? I mean, the...
On that map, you can't, but they can pull up a map that shows the...
Well, and I had to go the next day. I went on Friday morning to the city clerk's office to see a big map to where I could read it and then make reference. But it would be so much easier if they had put, I asked him, I said, do you have this section with street names on it? And I asked him that night, and he did not. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we also addressed that issue with Mr. Bass, and the issue is the software. When you zoom into this level of detail, it doesn't allow streets. So our GIS department did create the maps that allow, that overlaid this map onto a map that has streets, so that we would have something available to the public. But the software itself doesn't allow that level of detail.
Okay, thank you. Further public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we will take a vote on this issue. All in favor of the redistricting as presented today? I'm going to stop real quick because we do have one more comment.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Sadio, a member of single member District three. And I also attended the meeting happening this last Thursday regarding this similar issue. And I also attended the meeting happening this last Thursday regarding this similar issue. And I just wanted to say that I think in a matter of funding and political will, the reason that this issue may feel like it's not being adequately addressed, in a sense, has to do with the regard of the time constraints and the funding restraints. And I understand the council's perspective on that. And I just wanted to try to make mo, try to make a note of the fact that it is three months away from February 7th, from when this deadline will be needed and-
Two months, but go ahead.
Okay, so.
Well, I think the point is, the following is, as Tom Thompson said, whatever we, the rules and regulations that go into how we move things, left, right, up, down, in and out, we're not going to change the, what this does because of the rules about SMD areas have to be contiguous, et cetera. We're trying to make decisions based off of the rules that are presented to us. Not rules that we make up, not rules that we wish were there, but the rules that exist. Those are constraints that put us into a situation. But the reality is, the number one thing on SMD three is it stays substantially Hispanic, which is what the challenge is. 59% is a very strong support for that ethnic area of town. We can't change that.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I was just, as Mr. Perez was putting forward very eloquently, trying to push for some more consultants, more opinions, because it is very important to people who live in this area. And I believe that they are worth the time and the money to be able to look at more options.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to count to three. If no one else stands up, we're going to take a vote. One, two, three. All in favor of the redistricting map as presented, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 6-0 and we are going to take a 15-minute break. Together at 11:04 a.m. And we will move into item E, which is consider a resolution designating the number of votes to be cast for each nominee for the Board of Directors of Tom Green County Appraisal District. Julia, you're on.
Thank you. And as you'll recall, in August 17th, we were asked to propose a list of five board members to serve on the appraisal district. All of the current board members agreed to serve again. Whenever the ballot came forward from the appraisal district, every taxing entity had supported those same five folks. So we do have the ability to just divide the votes equally and give them each 258 votes if everyone's in support of that, or we can talk about other ways. But since there are five board spots and four, five candidates, it kind of just makes sense to divide everything equally. And just to clarify, if anyone was reading the background packet where the original letter had mentioned six, we did confirm with the appraisal district, that was a typo. So the five folks that were presented are the five individuals that are being brought forward for a vote today.
And just to be clear, from a political perspective or any other perspective, dividing the votes equally does not make a difference one way or the other on any single issue whatsoever. So by-
That's correct.
Splitting them in a different manner does not accomplish anything. Is that correct?
Not in this instance, since there's five and five.
All right. With that, may I ask for the resolution to designate the number of votes to be cast for each nominee of the Board of Directors of Tom Green County Appraisal to be divided equally amongst the five candidates? Do I have support for that?
I'll move.
So I'll move by Tommy, seconded by Larry. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes, or resolution passes. Item F, consider a resolution calling and ordering a special election for January 29th, 2022, authorizing the city manager to execute a special election, election contract with Tom Green County and providing for the holding of an election to be administered by the Tom Green County Election Office. You want to explain this, Julia?
Yes, so first, I'd like to say that the boundaries that were just approved as part of redistricting do not come into play. So the boundaries for this special election will be the same as of whenever Councilmember Carter was elected, the same as December 1st is what the date that we have in the resolution, just to be clear and to delineate between what was and what was approved today. So that's the first item of note. So as you all know, Councilmember Carter resigned the afternoon of our last meeting, November 16th via his Facebook post. That vacancy triggered 120 days of calling an election. In most instances, calling means actually ordering the election. In this particular instance, the Secretary of State did confirm that it is conducting the election. So that would have given us through March 1, March 16th to conduct the election. However, there's another provision in state law that says there are 30 blackout dates on either side of a primary. So that pushed us back to the very last available date for an election to be January 29th, which is a Saturday. So the special conditions that kind of forced that were the fact that there were more than 12 months remaining on the SMD five council term. And then also, our council terms were extended from two years to four years in the 2015 election. So together, those trigger the 120 days, which was of course shortened by the blackout dates surrounding the primary. So because of that, the filing deadlines for a January 29th election will be today through Jan, sorry, December 20th. And the ballot drawing for the order of the ballot will be the Monday following Christmas, which is December 27th at 10 a.m. Early voting will be the dates of January 12th through the 25th, weekdays only, excluding January 17th for the MLK federal holiday. And that will take place all at the Keys Building. Election Day again, Saturday, January 29th. Those voting hours will be 7:00 to 7:00 and there will be three locations, all within SMD five. And those will be Angelo Bible, MHMR and St. Mark Presbyterian Church. Those are of course, subject to change, but those are the ones that we have confirmed as of now. And then anyone wishing to vote in the election would need to be registered by December 30th. So a lot of this is happening near the holidays. It is a very compressed timeline. But again, we've been in very close communication with the Secretary of State and this is what we have to do according to state law. We would like to give a huge thank you to the Tom Green County Elections Office, Vana in particular and her staff. They will be holding this election for us while preparing for the primary election and also in the midst of transitioning their equipment and upgrading. So we do understand that this is a burden for them and we do thank them greatly for their assistance.
What was the conflict between the city's charter and the state of Texas?
The city's charter said that we should conduct, that we should conduct the election at the next uniform date, I believe. Or, and it also had a provision that we could have appointed someone, I believe. Let me look those up. There is a case here where our charter, the Texas Constitution and the election code all kind of overlap and contradict in places. So that's why we had to get the Secretary of State's office involved.
The state supersedes the city?
Absolutely.
And so if, if the council was going to make a decision about appointing someone, would that change the need for this election?
We were specifically told that we could not do that. And that's because of the term is exceeding the 12 months and that the terms of office are the four years.
Okay, so once again, we are going to, I will ask for a motion to consider a resolution calling and ordering a special election for January 29th, 2022, authorizing the city manager to execute a special election contract with Tom Green County and providing for the holding of election to be administered by the Tom Green County Election Office. Do I have that motion? So I'll move by Harry, seconded by Lucy. Public comment, please? With none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes 6-0. We will move on to item G, which is consider approving a contract with the San Angelo Convention and Visitors Bureau, CBB, allocating $965,000 of hotel occupancy tax, hot tax receipts for eligible activities and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Hi Tina.
Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. This is the renewal of our contract with the Chamber of Commerce Convention and Visitors Bureau, pardon me. We discussed their budget, of course, during our regular budget process, but that is not a formal agreement until council adopts the actual contract. So that's why we're bringing this item today. Just a quick overview on hotel occupancy tax and how it's performed over the last few years. Given you FY19 actuals at over $2.7 million, FY20 at $2.3 million, FY21 at $2.6 million. And then of course, our budget for '22, being that we budget conservatively, is just over $2.3 million. And then a little history on allocations that the council has awarded to the CBB over the past several years. They started in FY13 through 15 with a contract at 7.65. FY16 through 19 moved that up to 8.65. FY20, $1,012,500. FY21 was a little different. We, they budget, the city council authorized $765,000 from hotel occupancy tax dollars. And then they allowed the CBB to carry over $200,000 in savings for a total of $965,518. And then of course, FY22 budgeted slash proposed is the $1,012,500 that they were at before the pandemic occurred. And so that's, that's the financial information I have for you. Any questions on that?
I'm going to, is Diane still here? I know she was, yeah, come forward. Thank you for being here today. My questions would be the following. All right, so what, what we had hoped for and you hoped for and everybody worked hard to deliver were lots of events and because of the COVID, because of other issues. In fact, these events have not been able to take place. The air race, Cowboy Jubilee, et cetera. So the question mark that I have is, number one, still maintaining the budget of $1,012,500, knowing that these things have not, will not occur in the 2021, 2022 budget area. And knowing that and knowing that there are not going to be conventions or you're not going to be able to, not because you're not qualified or not working hard to do it, but there really aren't going to be conventions in the next year.
There, actually, there will be conventions. They're just not coming back as strongly as they have in the past. But Jana has worked diligently on the association market in the Austin area and we have seen progress there. Susanna also has worked hard in the sports area. So we have, the police games are coming back. And so we have several events that are coming back. We certainly don't have the 100 normal meetings that we do have normally. One of the things we did this year was cover costs for research because we felt that was really important so we actually know the visitor profile. So we worked with Rudolph Solutions and we have, we have researched from them that shows the hotel market, what, blue collar, white collar, sports weddings, those types of folks who come into our community for events. And we have been able to see that so we know which way we need to progress with our marketing and our advertising and the markets we need to, to go after for that. One of the other things I think that people have made an assumption on is that we are predominantly weekend overnight business. And I think people forget, and we use the term travel and tourism and not just tourism, because tourism connotes visitors overnighting for vacation or weekends. We have looked at the, the Star Weekly Report. So we've got four or three years of data on that as well. And we have seen that our weekend business and weekend occupancy is around, on average, around 60 to 65%. Our weekday occupancy, this is Monday through Thursday, is anywhere from 55 to 58%, some, in some cases, 60%. So that is that corporate traveler, that business traveler, that, that meeting group. We of course, saw a, a decrease in the meeting group over the past two years. But on average, we were averaging over 100 meetings a, a year. So the discrepancy really in that area is that meeting group that has not come back. But we do believe that we will start to see more of that. The trends are going that direction. It's just taking a couple of more years than we thought. We didn't see a, a second COVID ease hit. We didn't know that was coming, no one did. We didn't know there was going to be a third, maybe a fourth, we don't know. But we are still diligently working to get that business here. It, it just may be in smaller numbers.
So I think my, my ask is that knowing what we don't know, which is the COVID and the response and what will happen with it. And because we know the air race is being postponed till next year, et cetera, that we would take a look at this budget and really relook at it in terms of what we might not need to spend this year and saving it for the next year or for some special event or something specifically that comes to us that we didn't know was going to come to us. Because, and it's absolutely no fault of anybody's, COVID happened. Maybe there is somebody at fault, but we don't know who that person is or that organization. But what we do know is that you have not been able to get near the impact that you worked hard to get because of all the issues that are out there. So the question mark is, and continuing with the $1,012,500, is what are we going to keep in reserves, knowing what we're not going to be able to do?
Well, one of the things that is in the contract that has been for the past few years, I'm not sure exactly how many, I know it came before I got here, is we have $40,000 for a visitor event incentive and $40,000 for sports incentive that is in our contract every year. It is in a reserve account that is used for that specific thing. And until air race one, that was not something, we, we really delved into it too much. But we did usually for sports more than anything else. But those, that 80,000 is always in that contract every year. And that was money we were going to use towards air race one and Cowboy Way Jubilee. And we believe that is sufficient to hit those needs. The rest of the, the funds, the largest number amount of our money goes to PR and marketing and advertising. We're going to continue to hit that hard because the trend is, people want to get away from the big cities. And so we now have our, our bottlenecks are better than theirs campaign has been launched. It's gotten great reviews. We have videos, we have advertising and we even have radio that is going on. We're looking even at potentially going into the I-35 corridor and possibly doing some bus marketing to, while people are sitting in traffic having to look at signs like that because we think it'd be kind of enjoyable for them. And give them a hint that they should come to, to the west and to San Angelo to experience our community. So we feel very strongly, again, that that 80,000 that is set aside already in our accounts can go to that. And then in our regular account, we also have that same 80,000 for sports and for event marketing. So it's a total of 160,000 for potential events in the future.
The other thing I would ask is that in the past, I'm not saying since you've been here because it hasn't happened, is that we don't get towards the end of the third quarter and say, oh my gosh, we've got to spend the money, else we have to give it back. That we make sure that the money that we spend is a very focused start, targeted investment in the things that you just said, which are hugely important. Not immediately, but also long-term. So that, because we do know that the heads and beds is what we look at in terms of the strength of support for the CBB.
Correct. We are fully funded by hotel tax dollars. It's a designated tax, so it cannot be used for streets. It cannot be used for certain other things. It has to be used for that. The visitor pays it, the local person does not. It's a 7% local tax, 6% at the state. And so we're going to continue to, to, to look at that. We're also looking at the short-term rentals, AirDNA. I got that research this year that shows that we have 47, instead of 17 when I first started, potential overnight rooms that are coming for homes, from homes. And so we want to look at that. We've shared that data with- We've shared that data with Tina and Finance to see how we can start looking at collecting funds from those visitors who stay in our hotels.
What's the ruling on that, Teresa, in terms of how, um, what they pay or how we track what they pay for hotel motel tax?
Tina's probably a better person to answer that because she gets to see those kinds of reports.
Opposed to register, and I believe they have to request a permit to even operate one of those types of businesses. And so if they register and they're approved, then we should receive that registration and therefore know that they should be submitting, you know, hotel tax to us. As you're, you're aware, we did just approve a hotel tax audit a couple of council meetings ago. We're getting ready to gear up and start that in January. And so that's something that we'll be looking at through that process as well.
So you're specifically looking at the Airbnbs and the short-term rentals for that?
We don't typically look at those, but we can certainly implement a portion of those into our study if, if that's something council would like for us to do.
I think we should, just based off of the numbers that Diane just gave us, if we were at seventeen and we're now at forty-seven or forty-five, whatever the number, that's a huge growth. And I think all people should participate.
I agree. Yes, yes, ma'am. We can ask our auditor to incorporate a portion in their samples for that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, please.
Diane, as, as a business traveler myself, there's some things, and we were looking at this, the budget and talking it over, but, you know, there's been, I've booked six or seven meetings for this oncoming year. All of them have been basically on a contingency basis. We're watching COVID, going to see what's happened. You know, I just want to make sure we're responsible with this one and say, you know what, we may not have as many events as we hope to, but be able to capitalize and capture if we have a set of little league games that can come here, do whatever we need. But that, I think that's the point there is we need to be safe. And this was as big as we've ever done. And it's in a time where we may not have half of these, but let's cross our fingers and hope we keep it safe.
And, and our hope is, again, the trends are people are trying to get away from the big cities. And so that is where we are concentrating on that I thirty-five, mostly the Texas market, some of the shoulder states, but mostly the Texas market to say, we believe we have a product that can be safe for you and give you the, the meetings you want, but we're looking at a smaller, smaller meetings and not large meetings. We've never looked at really large meetings because our hotel product is so scattered and we can't, uh, when we do bids, we get twenty here, twenty here, twenty here, and when they want a hundred and one location. And that's a, that's a bit of a challenge for us. So we try to do the best market that works best for our product.
Yeah, I want to re, reemphasize the fact that we believe strongly in the work that, and your leadership in terms of all of these programs, your thought process, understanding what to put out there, how to better market San Angelo. Unfortunately, because of COVID, your results were not able to come as big and bold as you wanted them to because of COVID. So we just want to be conservative. This is budgeted money, but let's make sure we don't just use it because it's there. We don't need it, let's not use it. And make sure if we, then the following year, we can be more aggressive when we think conditions are better. But to be very thoughtful and careful about spending the money. Make sure it's some, something that is going to produce the results that you want to be able to tout and tell us about. Any other questions or comments? All right. With that, let, uh, let's see, we need to approve, so I need a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
So moved by Tom, seconded by Harry. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Item H.
Could we get a little clarification on that? The agenda said nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, but the slide.
Yeah, it was forty-seven thousand dollar.
During the budget process, council authorized the CBB to carry over forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. That should have been in the background, but it wasn't in the actual caption.
It's on the background document.
The total between those numbers is the million twelve.
Forget, but we want to be very conservative. It's our direction. Consider approving the twenty twenty consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, CAPER, and Bobbi Arum.
Good morning, counsel. The CAPER is an annual action, it's the, I'm sorry, it's a requirement by HUD. It's due at the end of the calendar year. It primarily covers the city, CDBG, and home grants, but it also allows us to report to leveraged funds. The report outlines expenditures, identifies accomplishments, and addresses key interest items such as lead-based paint, homelessness, and special needs. Here's a snapshot of the funds. We had six hundred and fifty-one thousand of new CDBG funds, two hundred and ninety-four nine six five of home funds. We started with a balance of a hundred and ninety-four eight ninety-four for CDBG and eighty-one thousand two sixty-one for home. And we expended seven hundred and four thousand three fifty-nine and three hundred, three hundred and five eight thirteen for home funds. I'll show you what, what we spent it on. Here's a table of the CDBG accomplishments. While it shows that we completed only eleven blitzed rehabs, we actually leveraged remaining Bradford storm recovery funds and we kind of did additional homes there to kind of finish up that neighborhood. We completed ninety emergency repairs, which saw a spike after Storm Yuri. In fact, we had to transfer a hundred thousand of that balance we saw earlier to cover the extra costs. We completed sixteen fifty code of compliance cases in our targeted neighborhoods, and we paid our annual section one oh eight loan bill. Here are the home grant accomplishments, which includes assistance to five first-time home buyers with down payment closing costs for a total of twenty-two thousand eighty-eight, tenant-based rental assistance for thirteen special needs, clients for a total of thirty-three thousand sixty, and seven new homes completed by Archoda, who happens to be Galilee CDC, for a total of one hundred and seventy-five thousand of home funds. With the CARES Act funding from HUD and the state, we assisted a total of two hundred and eighty-one families with rent and mortgage assistance, expending over five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And lastly, here are some accomplishments for non-HUD grant funds. We weatherized three homes with Atmos Funds, sixty-one ninety-nine. We expended two hundred and seventy-five thousand in gap financing through the COSA DC program for seven new homes that we mentioned earlier. Funded seventeen cremations of indigent deceased, and we expended a hundred and eighty-one thousand in infill program. And they broke it up with fifteen, went with the fifteen, with the five K, and two opted for the infrastructure program. And that's all I have. Asking for approval of the, of the CAPER. We did update it. We have a copy, a new copy of it, and it'll be published after you approve it with some HUD, and we'll have it available for our citizens.
Are those actual dollars expended inclusive of administrative costs or are those simply costs expended without administrative costs added to it?
Yeah, these are, we don't, we don't report administration. So those are all project costs, activities.
Questions, comments?
One, just, I guess, technical question. Bob, it says that we're considering approving the twenty twenty consolidated annual performance.
Yes, it's always a year behind. It's, it's always the, the program year is twenty twenty. It's kind of goofy, but that's, that's how they work it. It's a year behind, yeah.
Other questions or comments from anyone? If not, then could I please have a motion for approving the twenty twenty consolidated annual performance and evaluation report?
I'll move.
Seconded by Larry. Any public comment? Now that we're in public comment, I have a public comment to ask. Sorry. The infill incentive, I forgot earlier. The infill incentive, is that the two hundred thousand that we have approved for infill projects or is that in addition to the infill funds?
It is strictly the infill, the two hundred thousand you allocate every year for the infill program that you had, you know, orchestrated and ushered in.
Okay. Thank you.
Very productive, by the way.
It's been very positive. With that, we'll take a vote. No, we're going to ask for public comment. I interrupted. Okay, no public comment. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And none opposed, motion passes six zero. Our closed session, executive session under the provision of Government Code Title Five, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter five five one, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Your Requirement that Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections, A, Section five five one point oh seven two, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding One, two point three seven six two acres, Fisher and Miller Survey zero one seven three, Abstract oh two oh five, Portions of EJ Wertham Survey oh 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 one, Abstract three nine four five. We are moving into closed session. We'll be back when we complete the business. Well, there were no action items, so we will move to announce. So we will move on to item B's, consideration of approving, approving various board nominations. Civic Events Advisory Board, Karen Abbott, SMD one to third term, and Clara Fries, SMD six to a second term, both ending December twenty twenty-three. Keep San Angelo Beautiful, Sam Spooner, SMD three to an unexpired term, ending September twenty twenty-two. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, C Rangel, SMD two, and Mark Davis, SMD six to a first term, both ending December twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion for approval of all the above?
I'll move.
Thank you. Second, any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. With that, we'll move on to announcements and consideration of the future agenda items. First, this is the only city council meeting that we will be holding in the month of December. Our next city council meeting will be in January. And does someone have that date for me?
That will be the fourth.
January fourth will be our next city council meeting. With that said, please enjoy the holidays. Merry Christmas to everyone, and we'll see you all soon. May I have an announcement for adjournment? May I have a motion? Okay, a second. By Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We are officially adjourned at twelve seventeen P.M. on December the seventh.